Good evening, everyone. Good to see you tonight. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you would like to, please feel free to join us. Would bow with us? Good God, we praise you for your grace, your goodness, your mercy, all things, about our decisions tonight.
Man. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its mission under all individuals.
Now call this meeting to order. Ms. Hurd, would you take the row, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Spurgers?
Here.
Smell?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Hawks?
Here.
Mr. Jones is out.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Good to see you tonight, Mr. Grimes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could just second. I'm glad to be back and I apologize for my extended absence. Three eye surgeries in three months has had its ups and downs, but as of now, I am good and so we'll just hope it stays that way.
I would imagine it's really good to see him.
Absolutely. Also, council, tonight, if you recall, two weeks ago, we had the discussion on 413 Garland Street. After sitting down and speaking with Mr. Clausen and Mr. Finkenbinder, we came to the decision I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney at this time.
Yes, I believe that that motion was pulled from the agenda so it's not under consideration. The Code Enforcement Department has decided not to go forward and seek a cleanup lien. As y'all are probably aware, by statute, a cleanup lien is not required to be sought by a city and the city can abandon a request for a cleanup lien at any time and it doesn't have to request a cleanup lien in the first place. In this case, Code Enforcement has decided not to go forward with that.
Do we want to close the loop on why there?
That would be a good question for the Director of Code Enforcement. It's not my decision to make, but there are a number of reasons why. And in fact, and I wouldn't and I won't posit to speak for him, but there are many instances where Code Enforcement might do a cleanup and not pursue a lien. A lien is, you know, measured against the property that's cleaned up and sometimes they decide that for lots of different reasons, it's not the right thing to do or it's something that they don't want to go forward with. So it's always optional.
I voiced my personal opinion on this. There's a couple of things in the presentation that somewhat stood out to me and that was that twice Code Enforcement had told the individual that everything was okay and if the city says it's okay, then we probably need to stick with that. And that's just for me personally. Anyway, any other questions? Okay, you should have received copies of the minutes from the February 25th, 2025, City Council meeting. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Tonight, you know, historically, cities have always given keys to the city for special recognition and we've done that for a number of years where we thought we'd change it up a little bit and we've gone to a different award and it's to recognize individuals or companies or businesses that have been a part of fabric of Conway and have been a positive influence in the city of Conway. And tonight, we are honoring two groups. One is the Conway Human Development Center and the other is Ronnie Williams. So these are, these two groups, Ronnie and the Human Development Center, are our first two recipients of this new award. Human Development Center folks, I'd say there's a group of you here tonight. Come on up, we'd like to meet you. The Conway Human Development Center was opened in 1959 and they have been a part of our city ever since. One little piece of advice, what am I doing, Felicia? Not advice, one little piece that you may not realize, economically, they bring about $65 million annually into the city of Conway. And if you've ever had the chance, if you've ever done it, go out there and spend some time. Sarah, who, we talk about deer hunting a lot, but Sarah has gone to bat for the city. They donated the land where our new soccer complex is. But if you've ever had the chance, go out there because I have gone and visited with the residents and the people, the ladies and gentlemen that work there. And the one thing that stood out to me is they would say, "These are my boys, these are my girls." This was their family and it makes a tremendous difference in the lives of these residents who are citizens of Conway. But 1959, it's a long time and I want to personally thank you for the job that you do for the people, for residents, and for this city. Anyway, City of Conway, Arkansas recognizes the Conway Human Development Center. The City of Conway would like to thank you for your outstanding contributions to the success of our community as a dedicated community partner. Unwavering commitment to our city has made a lasting impact. We appreciate you for providing employment opportunities and supporting local business. Thank you for being a pillar of progress and inspiration. Thank you for choosing Conway, March 11th. Our next recipient is Ronnie Williams. I've been working really hard to get Ronnie to convince Peter Brave at Braveview Restaurant to come to Conway and up a restaurant at the airport. He's not been able to swing it, but he's been trying really hard. And another thing I'd like to point out is Ronnie's my mentor because he's older than I am. But Ronnie is someone that I, when I say mentor, I really mean that. Ronnie is someone who has stepped up, helped me out of a lot of situations when some tough decisions had to be made. Calm demeanor and reflection on that has made a tremendous impact, not only on me, but on Conway. And Ronnie, I know we can't name a building after you tonight. I know you've got one at UCA, but we can give you a plaque. And I just personally want to thank you for our friendship and the City of Conway thanks you for all the tremendous things you have done here. You've meant a lot to this community. This is in recognition of Ronnie Williams for your outstanding contributions to the city, Conway community, your unwavering dedication and your commitment to making a positive impact in the lives of others. Selflessness, leadership, and tireless efforts, oddity, the true spirit of civic responsibility, thank you for your exceptional service, March 11th, 2025.
I'll take him to them.
Where was I? My glasses, also I can see. All right, first up, we have Community Development Committee. Mr. Hawkins, I will turn this over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is consideration to approve waiving of three readings for the ordinances on tonight's agenda. We have three particular ordinances to be read and I'm asking for a motion to waive those readings.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the waiving of three readings tonight. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve Conway Quick Cab, taxi cab permit in the city of Conway. And do we have a representative for this particular item? Don't have that. We have a resolution to be read for the item. It's Resolution R-25.
'06 is what I have.
'06 on the resolution?
Sorry. R-25 '06.
'06, thank you, Ms. Isby and Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Ben Riley here? I'm sorry, Brian Riley. Not here, Mr. Hawkins.
I'm sorry, they're not here. Do we have a motion for adoption of this resolution?
Do they not need? I was going to say, do they not need to be present to present and make sure they have insurance and all the things that's required?
Yes, I would think we.
We have all their, we have everything cleared on their application.
You do have it? Okay. Well, with that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for grant application submission for Conway Quick Cab. Any further discussion?
Just curious, do we know, are there still any operating franchise cabs in the city?
Yellow cab.
We do have one? Okay. I know over the years we've done this a time or two, but sometimes they go out of business, but they're, thank you.
Tard, you said that all documentation is correct in turn?
Yes. Their insurance and their, their, their location. They have a commercial location for a hub.
Good deal.
Everything that's required by the ordinance.
Thank you.
They pay their fees and.
Thank you, Ms. Hurd.
Ms. Hurd, call the vote, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes six to one. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a consideration to approve board members for the Robinson Cemetery Board, the Oak Grove Cemetery Board, and the Public Art Advisory Committee. Board, the Oak Grove Cemetery Board, and the Public Art Advisory Committee. We have been forwarded nominations, first of all, for the Oak Grove Cemetery Board, which is a partial term. Tom Courtway has been nominated for that. That term will expire December 31st, 2026. For the Robinson Cemetery Board, it is a five-year term, and the nominees forwarded to us are Joseph Brigance, the term to expire December 31 of 2029, Tamika Corley, the term to expire December 31, 2029, and Gabriel Reeves, the term to expire December 31, 2029. Also, the Public Art Advisory Committee, we have had two-year terms submitted to us. Those two people with a two-year term each, as submitted, would be Ashley Bruce with a term to expire December 31st, 2026, and Brittany Bartlett Montgomery, whose term would expire December 31, 2026. I would make a motion that we approve those board members for those two boards and the Public Art Advisory Committee.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve these boards and commissions. Any further discussion?
Just to have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
It says that they were advertised February 1st through March the 2nd of '25, and on the Public Art Advisory, it says a two-year term, and it expires on December 31st of 20, okay, '25 and '26, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My bad.
Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance approving the annual vendor list and appropriating funding for the Public Art Advisory Committee. And Ms. Rogers, welcome.
Welcome. This is our annual RFQ we do for the artists, for our murals, any downtown art projects that we have. And so we put out an RFQ for a list of artists, and those artists will be used for all of our smaller projects. So we anticipate doing some downtown murals. We have the Fifth Avenue Pickle Balls coming online, and so we may look at a piece of art for that. Animal Welfare has reached out to us for a piece of art. The Conway Community Center, we're looking at replacing one of our tiny toads, and maybe some collaborations with Art Walk may also come along if we can get that done in the fall. But this list of artists will be who we use for that, and then the funding that we're appropriating will be what we'll use to pay for those projects.
Any questions of Ms. Rogers?
So just educate me a little bit here. So these are not specific projects we asked them to bid on. We did an RFQ looking for qualified people. You had some process by which we vetted them. Was the public, I want to make sure I say it the right way, was the advisory committee involved in selecting those?
So they were not. We only have, so tonight, you, you approved the last two people for the board, and so we have one current person that was on the public art board. Everyone else is new. And so the city does the RFQ anyway, and so with the projects that come on board, we try to get them done within this fiscal year. And so we went ahead and did the RFQ because the city will use that RFQ as well for artists, for anything that we do. And so, but for the projects, they'll come on board for the projects, because we now have a full board.
Okay, so they'll be involved in helping choose what these artists that win the RFQ?
Yep, we'll go through the same thing like we did last year. We'll do, we'll let them know that someone like Animal Welfare will say, "We have a wall," and we'll go, go through the design phase with the artists, and so they'll start from point A with an artist, work through a design, they'll get to choose it, and then we'll go from there.
Awesome.
Anything over our bid amount will come back before you for appropriation. It will not be in this ordinance. It'll, like, if we do a bigger project and it's over our bid amount of $30,000, that project will come back before council for approval. These are just for our smaller projects.
Awesome, thank you. Speaking of art, the Art Walk was a tremendous success.
It was a tremendous success.
Also to note, in the ordinance, as has been the case for the past several years, the funding for this comes from the voluntary village tax for parks in Iraq.
Yes.
So voluntary tax, people choose to contribute it, and it's what we spend it on.
Thank you for pointing it out, Mr. Grimes. That's, that's a big one.
Now I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O-2526.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the vendors and appropriate funds for the Public Art Advisory Committee. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve the Annual Transportation Services Contract for 2025. Ms. Rogers, you left and came back. I figured you want to tell us some more.
So these are our annual transportation contracts that we award to Independent Living Services, Boys and Girls Club, and Faulkner County Council of Aging. They do a large amount of transportation for the city of Conway, so we allot these funds through our alternate transportation funding for them every year, and this is just a resolution approving their contracts for the fiscal year. It should be 2025 at the top, for 2025.
And it's the same amounts that we approved last year?
Same amount that we approved last year, yes. Those amounts have not changed for, for quite a bit. But they do an amazing job with these funds. They also get CDBG, but they do an amazing job in the city, helping us transport our elderly, our disabled, and then our, our young adults.
These are budgeted already, we're just appropriating?
These are already budgeted. These money is already in the budget.
Yes, just apparently. Thank you.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of Resolution R-2507.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to approve the Annual Transportation Service Contracts for the Transportation Department. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Final item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve the Nutter Chapel Road Reconstruction Project for the Transportation Department. And Kurt, tell us what you can, please.
Yes, sir. Okay. So this is the section of Nutter Chapel from PJ back down to Salem, about the, the lower half of the road from Dave Ward down to Salem, that's been unimproved. The plan is to go in there, curb and gutter the, the roadway, enclose the storm drainage, add, it'll be a 36-foot wide street section with, you know, two lanes of traffic and then bike lanes, and then we'll also have sidewalks on the project. We received four bids for the project. The low bid was from A and B Dirt Movers for $1,510,029. That was fairly close to our engineering estimate on the project, so we're asking that the council approve awarding this bid, and then we'll go ahead and give them the notice of award and, and start the process of getting contracts signed and, and under construction.
Do you have an estimate of when that would start?
So right now, typically, from the time that we issue the notice of award until we actually get the contracts executed, they're from two to four weeks. The, we, we do have, we do have one utility that Conway Corporation, it's a large diameter forest main, that they're, they're waiting on parts right now, that relocation work. But we're hopeful that once we issue the notice of award and schedule a recon meeting with the contractor, we can go ahead and get started on another part of the project. This is, the problem with the forest main is it's kind of down at the tail end of the drainage system on one of the, the drainage kind of splits on the thing in half. But we were, we're hoping that we can phase the construction anyway, and that they could start on the other phase that's not affected by the utility relocation. But hopefully, you know, hopefully we'd be able to get started in four to six weeks.
So will that require closure of that section for the entire time?
So, plan is, we are going to close, not the entire section, we're going to do half at, half at a time. It will not allow through traffic, section that's closed. It will allow local traffic. But yes, through traffic will be closed on one side or the other of this project through most of the construction.
The question there is, I've got a comment on Facebook about this that said, "If this happens before Salem is reopened, I will literally die," which might be a slight exaggeration.
That might be a little bit of an exaggeration.
Yeah, right. So, but it sounds like traffic will be able to pass there just one lane at a time, and not through traffic, local traffic.
So, no, local traffic. It won't be, it won't allow through traffic.
So, man, how does this work? Is there an option to wait? Is there a reason to? I mean, maybe not. I'm, I'm learning here.
To, to, to build it without closing it to through traffic?
No, to just start that after Salem's reopened. I'm just asking, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we're in prime construction season right now. It would be, you know, if we wait till, Salem Bridge should be open, I believe, in late spring. I mean, it, it, we're not talking about a huge overlap between when this project starts and when traffic is actually opened back up on Salem. The Salem project won't finish, but we will have the bridge, you know, hopefully open in late spring. And this, this project shouldn't, and we can certainly look at that and see how that works into the construction schedule and season and so forth, but the plan is to not have a whole lot of overlap between this project starting and, and traffic actually getting, you know, significantly affected on Nutter Chapel while Salem is still shut down right now.
Did I hear you say what the estimated time for the completion of this project in total would be?
We, on the Nutter Chapel?
Yes.
So the, the plan is to, right now, the, hopefully it would be finished by, it'll be towards the end of the year.
Lot of work going on in Conway.
Mm-hmm.
A and B is also a local company.
Right.
I like that.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of the Resolution R-2508.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the resolution for Nutter Chapel Road Reconstruction Project. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
First up is an ordinance to approve the lowest bid and appropriate funding for the Class I landfill for the Department of Sanitation. We have Mr. Joel Hopper here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, for your consideration tonight, we do need to build out some new, a new cell at the landfill, it's our next three zones. I want to specify, this is not an expansion. It is pre-approved in our plans and permit, and it's definitely needed. We were able to evaluate the bids that we received, and, and our low bid was the, was acceptable. It was also reviewed by our environmental engineers, so for, for the amount of $1,759,316.
Give us just a little background. This doesn't come up very often, like, what, what does a cell mean? How long will a cell last typically?
Yeah, so the last cell was approved in 2010. It was about the same size. This one's 8.2 acres, so we expect it to last, you know, if our, if our volumes don't increase significantly, and they haven't over the last, well, I mean, I've been here nine years, and they've been within 5,000 tons a year. So they haven't, they haven't really, even though the city's grown, the, the tonnage hasn't really increased much. So we expect it to last anywhere from 12 to 15 years, so.
And what, just so folks at home as well, what is our, our life expectancy right now on our landfill?
Okay, our last engineering inspection report was 42 years, so that fluctuates some. I started working in Conway in 2015. At that time, our expected life was 49 years. So if you do the math, you know, I've been here, what, nine years, and only seven years of, of space has been taken up. And, and I have to, you know, while I've got the microphone, I, I've got to give my guys on the landfill a shout out. They really did an excellent job. Not a good job, they did an excellent job. And, I mean, ADQ will bring groups of people out to, to tour our facility, and it's based off the work they do, so very proud of them.
Your whole department does an excellent job.
Yes, they do. I will make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O-2527.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the lowest bid and appropriate funds for the sanitation department. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
The Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Thank you, Joe. Last item is consideration to approve IT equipment disposal for the Conway, I'm sorry, next to the last, Conway Police Department. Chief Harris. Didn't see his name twice.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So on the first item, we just request removal of the listed IT items, and ask that they either be properly disposed of or sold online, depending on their condition. Take this microphone.
Make a motion, we approve disposal of this equipment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the IT equipment disposal with the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Now we're at the last item. An ordinance to approve appropriation of funds and approve a rental agreement for the Conway Police Department, Chief Harris.
Yes, so our department is beginning to outgrow its current office space, so we're moving parts and pieces around and trying to accommodate that, and working on expanding our detective division, as I do a good job. I'm sure of y'all seeing the rest of, two people that were going across five states stealing, and our detectives worked real hard and caught them. With that being said, I'm putting an extra lieutenant up there and adding another officer moved up there to detective, except we have no space. So I'm trying to move part of the investigation division that's not detectives to a rental property right there behind Chestnut Animal Clinic, Covington property right there. It's a strip mall. Rent that, and then that way it'll free up probably 10 more desks in that other spot, so then we can grow.
Just curious, you said you're running tight on space. What's, you have a long-term thought or plan there yet, or?
So, yeah, there's, there's a couple. Add an addition is one. However, we have, when, when the police department was built, there was a storage space upstairs, and we can use that for remodeling once. It was an overflow for evidence, so we're reconfiguring evidence and how that worked, and once we get that stuff back in downstairs, then we'll move towards remodeling and making more office space up there.
So there's still more capacity in that building? Just, okay.
And one thing that has been looked at, once they reach that capacity, is the possibility of going up, but that'll take some engineers and some like that. We're not to that point yet, but there is that possibility. Did you buy that Pierce Heating and Air Building?
We did.
We did.
So right in the front of it is our crisis response team, so that, that holds five employees. In the rear of it has the bays, and we're using that for minor fleet maintenance, so. But that building, I believe, was built 2008? Nine, 2009? So during that time, we've obviously increased officers as well as civilians, so we're.
Come with the Pierce Heating and Air Building?
No, 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 no.
Police Department.
The Department.
Police Department, okay. You know, if Chief Winter were here, he'd say his building opened up in 1998 over there. It was actually built when, Mark? When it was the armory?
Oh, man.
Oh, gosh, that was.
Just saying, I'm just, you know, he's not here.
When I got hired, we were at an old PD that was a church and a court and.
Anyway, council, back to you.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O-2528.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance and appropriation of funds for rental agreement for the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion?
I don't have any further discussion, but a question. I'm assuming this rental agreement is just continuous until?
Yes, Mr. Covington, he's worked with us.
Okay. All right. I just didn't want us to get it and then be out.
How many square feet in it, Chief? You know?
Do not know. I know.
Not a problem, I just thought I'd ask the question.
I know it'll hold nine people.
Seems like Covington's are doing us a favor there, that $800 a month.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good deal.
Yes.
Commercial property these days.
Yes, it is. Ms. Hurd.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
And that passes seven to zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That's all we have tonight. Again, Mr. Grimes, glad to have you back.
Yes.
Council, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.